Yes, Councilmember White, members of the committee, thank you for having me. My name is Carl Zabo. I'm Vice President and General Counsel of NetChoice. I'm also a professor at George Mason and Chennan Scalia Law School. Let's start by answering the question that you just asked, Councilmember White, which kind of elucidates how this bill is way out ahead of the fundamental question of, what are we trying to do here? You asked a very simple question. Have there been any lawsuits on the use of AI for discrimination? Well, I can name two already. In May, EEOC was able to file a lawsuit against a group called iTutor Group. And just this past June, the Department of Justice brought an algorithm-based lawsuit in violation of the Federal Housing Act. So already, there is evidence of this law being applied, existing law being applied, anti-discrimination law being applied to algorithms. So very simple question. You asked some of the experts supporting this bill, and they didn't have an answer. That shows that this bill needs a big thorough discussion session. Second, the small business exemption doesn't work, as just mentioned, because any small business is going to use a larger service provider. That larger service provider is then going to trickle down liability to the small business. Now, turning to the legislation itself, it is both unnecessary and has harmful unintended consequences. So unnecessary. As I just mentioned, there are already lawsuits being brought today against the use of AI, two I just mentioned. And to quote the CFPB Director Rohit Chopra, not exactly a raging pro-business guy, he said, "Companies are not absolved of their legal responsibilities when they let a black box model make lending decisions." Crystal clear from the head of the CFPB that if you use an AI to engage in unlawful discrimination, it's still unlawful. Let's talk about some of the harms, right? So on line 19, we have, it applies to discrimination based on class of individuals. What does this mean? Let's look at access to education. It makes it harder for schools to reach potential students. Think about scholarships for minorities. They're illegal because while the minority receiving the ad for the scholarship is benefited, the one who doesn't receive the ad is disenfranchised. Let's use another example. Efforts to increase minority population result in discrimination. We've already seen this with the Asian American suits against schools like Harvard. Now, there is an exemption in there against legally approved affirmative action programs, but that's not the type that we see with education systems. Let's use another example. Offers of lower insurance for good drivers. Just because you haven't had an accident in a while, you may get lower insurance. Not based on race, religion, but that is a class of individuals right there. Good drivers, people with fewer accidents. Let's look at another example. Daycares that make offers to families with children. That's a class of individuals as opposed to showing offers to families without children. And finally, the AARP sending discounts for healthcare to those over 70. That is disenfranchising those of age 69, 68, 67. So you can see how the definitions here are poorly written. And of course, these are absurd examples that likely AGR would never bring. But you add in a private right of action with statutory damages, and we know how that game plays out. They will walk up to these businesses, they will walk up to the AARP, and they will say, "We will either sue you for millions and millions of dollars, or you can settle right now." Second thing, on transparency, we've heard a lot about talking about transparency, showing the system. Why would that be hard? Why would that be bad? Well, the bad actors are constantly trying to game the system. We know this. That is what trying to, search engine optimization is all about. People constantly trying to get their stuff to the top, trying to beat the system. And essentially, the transparency requirements are telling the bad actors all the ways to get around. It's like telling the bank robber how to break into the bank. Now, if you do want transparency, you can do that through discovery requests as part of litigation. So anyone, anywhere, who has been harmed or thinks they've been harmed by an AI can bring a suit today under existing law. They can, in those suits, engage in discovery. And in that discovery, they will see if the AI system is or is not acting illegally, as we've already seen in the two prior suits I cited. I will finally wrap up with the fundamental legal problems with this law. And first of all, there are critical terms used with no definitions. Let's use the word algorithm. Used multiple times, this is all about algorithmic discrimination. We don't define what the heck is an algorithm. There's no definition of AI. So this law is an important conversation starter, but it's certainly not something that is at all ready for primetime. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca Strauss.
Thanks. I'm testifying in the hopes that the D.C. Council delay moving forward with the Algorithms Act as written. I am the Director of Economic Initiatives at the Federal City Council, which is a business civic organization, whose 240 members are some of the district's most civically engaged CEO-level leaders. Our purpose is to work towards making the district a better place for all its residents. Let me be clear that the Federal City Council believes forcefully in removing any and all discriminatory business practices that put protected classes and minority groups at a disadvantage. But the Algorithms Act could end up casting its net too broad, missing true discrimination, while burdening far too many businesses with onerous and expensive reporting requirements. The act has the best of intentions, but fails to spear the true problem, while at the same time, creating gargantuan and costly new regulatory problems. This 15-page act is woefully vague on the very fine details of what a discriminatory algorithm looks like. The European Union has spent many years and thousands of pages of text trying to tease out how to monitor police and enforce potentially discriminatory artificial intelligence algorithms. They still haven't settled on something that works well. Major U.S. research institutions are now digging into the hard work of figuring out how to do this. The D.C. Council should wait until there is a clear consensus among experts. The district and its businesses should not have to be a guinea pig for untested approaches. The act's audit requirement on covered entities will force D.C. businesses to bear the burden of relying upon third-party auditors, a business practice that is currently unregulated and does not have a recognized standard for judging whether data or an algorithm are discriminatory. That judgment has a lot to do with understanding the context of how data is collected, analyzed, and then used. The danger is that these third-party auditors will not fully understand the context and make faulty assessments about whether something is discriminatory or not. The reporting requirements are such that a vast swath of the D.C. economy would have to hire auditors. Many could be swept up in needless battles over correct data use and practices. This act is missing its target. The Attorney General already has the authority to go after discriminatory practices. The burden should not be on all D.C. businesses to report every year to prove their innocence, and then do the same with every vendor they hire. We support going after discriminatory decisions that harm protected classes, but there must be a better way to do it. We urge the council to put more time into studying better options before putting the Algorithms Act to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, for this panel, Edwin Iggy.
Thank you, sir. My name is Ed Iggy. I am Vice President for Government Bears and Workforce Development at the National Retail Federation. The NRF appreciates the opportunity to testify today. We are the world's largest retail, federal, excuse me, retail trade association. We are based here in Washington, D.C. In D.C., 14% of jobs are supported by the retail industry. 84,000 people in the district are directly employed by retail. At a time when retailers nationwide, and especially those here in the district, are still recovering from the pandemic, the bill we're discussing today would stifle job creation and economic development. Because of the large volume of annual applications my members receive, retailers increasingly have used this software to assist with hiring and promotion decisions. These tools, when properly designed and deployed, have the capacity to greatly assist employers in making smart, efficient decisions to add talent to their workforce. They also benefit candidates by matching their skills to open jobs. Legislation is currently written, contains, as previously mentioned, several undefined and vague terms that make compliance with the statute difficult, if not impossible, but certainly exceedingly burdensome. I want to point out one particular problem, which I think is probably most significant. The bill states that an algorithm that is, quote, "used in whole or insignificant part," end quote, "to make an algorithmic eligibility determination," assumes that the employer or the algorithm itself is somehow privy to detailed information about these applicants. For D.C. employers to avoid, quote, "any practice that has the effect or consequence of violating this act," they would need to affirmatively ask applicants to provide detailed information that would otherwise not be required. In fact, D.C. employers cannot and will not legally ask these questions. It is, for instance, broadly unlawful to request an applicant's date of birth. You run afoul of the Age Discrimination in Employment Act. Similarly, the bill requires a disparate impact analysis based on categories about which an employer would never ask applicants. We would never ask applicants their sexual orientation, their familiar status, their genetic information, their source of income or disability. Why would we know these things? It would be difficult or impossible to conduct a disparate impact analysis based on these categories without requiring that candidates disclose this sensitive personal information. Even for those federal contractors who, as part of their affirmative action program, must inquire about these things, candidates have to voluntarily self-identify their gender and race. Such employers generally do not collect information about candidate's religion, sexual orientation, familiar status, genetic information, source of income, or disability. The bill would require covered entities, as an example of their personal information, to include biometric data. The bill, again, does not define what biometric data is. Instead, the bill states the phrase "biometric data includes," quote, "voice signatures, facial geometry, fingerprints, and iris scans." Are pictures, photographs, recorded videos of an individual considered biometric data? The bill requires D.C. employers to provide an adverse action disclosure that should include the, quote, "factors the determination depended on." The bill states employers should allow the individual subject to the adverse action with the opportunity to, quote, "submit corrections to that information." But this doesn't make any sense in the employment context. If the algorithm determines that someone applying for a legal position is not a lawyer, how does that person correct that information? There are no possible corrections that the candidate could not provide that would alter an adverse action outcome. This bill requires a five-year audit trail. This requirement is highly burdensome and require employers to hold personnel data longer than EEOC requires. In sum, while we applaud the purpose of preventing discrimination through algorithmic bias, we believe that the law as written should not be passed, based on the burden that the law would impose, the vagueness that permeates many of these terms, and the likelihood of abuse. I thank the council.
Thanks so much to this panel. Some support for this bill and this panel, a good amount of criticism or critiques about the bill as written. There's quite a lot written about algorithmic discrimination. I come from a starting point that algorithmic discrimination exists. Does anybody on this panel have an opposing view on that?
Can you define the term?
Do we agree on the term discrimination? Do we need to, like, do we need to have that discussion?
So the purpose of an algorithm is to separate one thing from another.
So I want to ask, Ed, are you saying we don't have enough clarity in this conversation of the concept of algorithmic discrimination to agree or disagree on whether or not it exists?
Again, to the professor's point, this is something that EEOC has been handling for months, if not years. I mean, EEOC has taken a judicious, slow approach to this issue.
How would you define algorithm, Mr. Iggy?
Again, again.
Just you, not about the bill or even me. How would you define algorithm?
I would define algorithm, again, I would, it's your piece of legislation. You need to define it as you write it into law.
We flush it out in hearings, so that's why I'm having a conversation with you. You said we need an input. I'm trying to get input.
All right. So what I would say is, yeah, all the algorithm does is separate one class from another class. It could be based on anything. And the idea that these are inherently problematic, you know, again, they can be used, as the professor articulated, for any number of areas. And again, EEOC is looking at this judiciously. They've, they, under both Republican and Democratic leadership, have said that these tools can be used properly. Your bill would go far too far in broadly prescribing, or at least heavily regulating these tools, based on pure assumptions and vague, vague terms.
Well, I think we're, I'm trying to get to the place that you're getting to, but I'm trying to make sure we're walking there together. I don't have a bill, the bill is before my committee, so I'm having a hearing to make sure we get public input. I'm trying to get your input, but as a starting point, I'm just trying to figure out if we agree, as a starting point, that algorithmic discrimination exists.
Yes.
Okay. Let's assume we do, okay? My next belief is that where there's discrimination, we should do something. Is there anybody who has a different sort of understanding? If where we find discrimination, we should do something. That's my conclusion. Does anybody have a differing conclusion on that point?
So once again, we're using the term discrimination kind of cavalierly. My child picking out which book to read at night is a very discriminating behavior. Discriminating is simply making one choice over another, which is the purpose of an algorithm. An algorithm helps us figure out, is the answer 10 or 12 to 10 plus 2? That's an algorithm, that's algorithmic discrimination. What I think we're really talking about is unlawful racial discrimination.
That's an aspect of it. So let's stay there then. Racial discrimination. All right. So if racial discrimination exists in a setting, we should do something to address it. Do we agree on that premise? Or do we disagree? Does anybody disagree?
So I think the first question is, what's the harm we're trying to prevent? And let's work backwards from that. If the harm is use of race to prevent housing access, let's use that as a starting point.
No, no, no. I want to stay broad about racial discrimination, because I used an example earlier that is not illegal, but it impacts my family very significantly, which is I have little black girls, and I want them to see healthy images of black girls and black families on TV, but I'm having a very difficult time as a parent overcoming the algorithms. There's nothing, to my knowledge, illegal there, but it does matter. So that's why I'm staying broad. I'm not just talking about illegal discrimination, because I don't think we're there yet. What I'm asking is, should we do something about racial discrimination? Does anybody disagree?
I totally agree with Councilman White. Let me jump in at this one and say to you, I appreciate the example that you used earlier regarding your family. What it really says to me, and I think that's what you're certainly articulating here as well, is that to some extent, perhaps, the industry is tone deaf. That's, you know, that's kind of what's going on. I mean, it's not illegal, but clearly, they're tone deaf, that you can't find a channel, that you see diversity in terms of your kids. So that's a tone deaf issue. It does flag, in fact, a blind spot. And that's part of the issue here as well.
I do think that there's a blind spot, and I think it matters more than some folks appreciate. But what I'm trying to get to is, if racial discrimination, just one category of discrimination, as an example, racial discrimination in algorithms exists, I believe we should do something. Then the question is, what do we do, and when do we do it? Now, the primary critiques I've heard from this panel is, we're moving too quickly, and this bill needs work. So what I'm trying to get to is, what do you recommend, Mr. Zabo, Mr. Iggy, Mr. Brett Sakis? What do you recommend is the right timeline for developing this bill? For getting specific recommendations on this bill to the committee? What would be an ideal timeline?
So the idea of creating a timeline is predicated on first identifying what's the harm we're trying to address. So in the example, Councilmember, if you are not being served, and your children are not being served movies and videos of people of color, and suddenly you want the algorithm to increase that, that would be a form of racial discrimination at the end of the day, because now it's selecting movies and content for you based on race. That's a positive outcome that you want, but that is racial discrimination in kind of the overarching category we're trying to identify. I think one of the real dangers I see here, especially with this legislation right now, is simply having somebody like the Attorney General suggest that discrimination of housing by race, but using an algorithm, is legal today, empowers bad actors to use that as a defense at trial, because they can say, "Oh, I didn't engage in criminal activity. The AG of D.C. actually has a bill to make it illegal," which suggests that today it is not illegal. Now, I would say, any action that is illegal is illegal, regardless of the medium that you use to use it. And that's what we're talking about here. So to create a timeline, we need to identify what are the specific harms we are trying to address? And then we can figure out what a win condition is on that. If we're trying to assume that passing a law today would eliminate racism, which would be fantastic if that were possible, I think, you know, we should fully support it. But this bill is kind of, it needs to figure out what is it trying to do? And if it's trying to make crystal clear that the use of AI for unlawful discrimination, that's one thing, but this is a much broader bill, and we need to figure out what we're trying to do with it.
Mr. Hunter, did you want to add something to?
Yeah. I totally hear you. Hey, discrimination is real. There's no question that discrimination exists. Discrimination exists in algorithms, right? We're subject to it in credit. It happens, we know that. And this is an area that needs to be explored, but it needs to be done carefully. And you asked about a timeline, Councilmember. I think that you asked about best practices. This is the kind of area that would really lend itself to consideration by a group, by the National Council of State Legislature, so a working group, because it impacts so many people. And again, it's emerging. Nobody has the right answers. So I think the timeline is long for us to do something on this, and I think we should move very carefully.
Mr. Jones, did you want to add something?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember. I guess I wanted to sort of re-center this a little bit about the people. I feel as if it would be nice to say, as you've said, discrimination is real, and let's talk about what this bill is trying to protect against. It's about white people getting ads for some jobs and black people getting ads for others, right? It's about the opaque hiring algorithms that discriminate against people with disabilities. And I think it is telling that when you ask about a timeline, there was no real answer given. I mean, this bill has been out for almost a year. If they, if we welcome sort of discussions to clarify and to talk about sort of issues, but again, this bill has been out for a year. And we, as I've said, and I think you've said, right? The problem exists, discrimination is happening now, and we shouldn't wait for, there are studies, there are law review articles about algorithmic discrimination. If they are uncertain about it, there are ways in which we can educate ourselves and really get a good grasp of the topic. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm a bit over time. Let me turn to my colleague, I believe Councilmember Pinto is with us. Councilmember Pinto.
Can you hear me?
Yes, and see you. Welcome.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Chairman White, and thank you to all of these panelists for sharing your perspective. I want to drill down on this vendor issue of, even if there's an exemption for small businesses, how attenuated we really get when we have an all-out ban? And maybe I can start with you, Mr. Hunter, about some of your concerns about being liable, really, for all of the activities that your vendors may be responsible for.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. You know, liability is the critical issue of this legislation. In fact, the manner in which it's written, that's what it benefits, lawyers. The lawyers will be defending these cases, and the lawyers will be prosecuting these cases. Small businesses would just be caught up in the middle because of our reliance on the vendors who provide these services. The reality of matter is, we would be subject to, for the adverse action of this vendor, even if it's unintentional, right? You know, again, these are very serious issues. They need to be addressed, but they need to be done in a much more systematic manner. Not only housing providers, other small businesses could be impacted by this. We're more concerned about the impact on the district as a whole, even as it relates to our individual industry.
Thank you. And Mr. Zabo, you started to touch on this about some of the other potentially positive benefits of using preferences that can be associated with algorithms. I'm wondering if you or others can talk about, kind of from a customer service perspective, some of the things that district consumers have maybe come to rely upon as a result of more specific targeted information due to algorithms?
So thank you for the question. Let's use a simple example. Let's presume there's a school, new school opening, a new charter school opening in your district, and you want to send a customized email to families in your district with children from your list of potential voters. You would probably use a third party to do the processing of that data, just because it doesn't make sense for you to have servers in your background. Well, that would be illegal under this law, because you are now giving preference to the families on your list with children of an educational opportunity of that new charter school. But that's a great thing, letting people, families, know about new charter school opportunities. Another example would be somebody taking out in that Georgetown University, trying to better identify low-income and underprivileged individuals and encourage them to apply to school. That would be illegal under this law, because they are giving them preferential treatment. They're discriminating in their favor to show them those opportunities to the disadvantage of those of privileged families. So that's the thing. We need to identify what is the harm we're trying to solve before we start going after the system itself. And discrimination is, you know, racial discrimination is horrible. I think we can all agree on that. We need to get rid of it. But there's a lot of really good things that will be annihilated under this approach. And if we are willing to throw away all those incredible goods, like helping underserved communities learn of educational opportunities, then we need to address it. I think going into the cart before the horse part, something as simple as affirmative action at universities. We need to have a conversation with the schools, the charter schools, the universities, how this would impact their recruitment process. And I think until we do any of this, we really need to take a real pause and have a robust discussion without the threat of legislation in front of us.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other thoughts on that piece about the, I don't want to say "unanticipated consequences," because they might be anticipated, but...
Councilmember, you should also know, this legislation is written arguably was subject to district to liability.
You mean the district government for our own?
Yeah. The district government could arguably subject to liability under this legislation as written.
Well, that wouldn't be the first time that that has happened. Needs to be responsible for our own activity as well.
I would jump in and make one other point. And this is just really, quite frankly, putting on my civil rights hat. I think the point was made earlier that, you know, this has certainly been into domain in terms of having comment on, and you've been looking at it almost a year. The clock is still running. Too many times for folks of color, we're asked to continue to wait. Okay? That's, I mean, that's how this resonates with me. Once again, here we are, asked, as we sit around the table, to wait. And the waiting for me is, you know, all the folks that are falling through the cracks on this. So I don't know the timeline. I'm not going to pine on the timeline, but I will say, we do need to set a timeline, and let's just get this done. And that there's going to be a change in guard at the end of the year. I would love to see something done before then.
I would just say, Councilmember, I just, this is so broad that it would snare any employer, even if their algorithms do nothing more than scan the applicant's application. I mean, again, this is, the broadness of these bills, this bill, the vagueness of these terms is really, is really what we have concerns about. Again, we have 84,000 folks in the district who we directly employ in the retail industry. The shops and restaurants, you know, I'm right here in city center. They're coming back after the pandemic. This isn't a massive amount of liability to put on their shoulders just at the time that, you know, they need customers, they need employees, and they do not need to, to the professor's point earlier, trial lawyers knocking on their door day and night suggesting that, under this new private right of action, we're willing to shut down your business over an algorithm you use to determine anything. So, you know, while I take the arguments, look, you know, this is something, and racial discrimination is bad, therefore, we have to do something. This is something we should do. This is something. You know, I would just caution the Council to be very judicious in how you go about regulating our industry.
Okay. And I'm not sure if Ms. Strauss is still here from the Federal City Council. But to that point, others may want to speak to this of, it's been kind of touched upon a little bit on this panel of making sure that we're maintaining our competitive abilities within the region as businesses are considering locating here or considering a change of plans for those who are here. Can anyone speak to other jurisdictions that have promulgated similar rules or thinking about similar rules, like in California? Can anyone speak to that?
Councilmember, you're making a very important point as it relates to the potential impact of this legislation on the district's competitiveness to do business. And I'm sure there are other panelists who are going to speak to that. It's a great issue. But it is a very legitimate concern. Too often, we find some elected officials who are proposing measures where the district is the first to do it in the country. And that's one thing. This measure would be the first in the world to do it, and that's too far. This does impose serious concerns, significant concerns, for small and large businesses alike on the potential exposure. And it also, another impact for small businesses is the potential to lose these service providers. You've heard testimony that some of the service providers said, under this, the threat of litigation or liability to this legislation, they just couldn't do business in the District of Columbia. So, this could be very disruptive in many, many ways.
Councilmember, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I saw you trying to participate. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to be a little more like concrete about who this bill covers, right? It starts at $15 million in revenue, and then it's also about possessing or controlling information of 25,000 residents, right? So, it's not as if we haven't, or the bill hasn't considered sort of, it's not sweeping in the, say, the restaurant that's trying to hire five people, right? And we're trying to, we tried to set some sort of ceiling, I guess. And then, I guess, the second point I was trying to make is that, I mean, think, we wouldn't let someone hire a bouncer to turn away marginalized people from the restaurants or banks, right? So, why would we let them do it through a computer? And I think that is an imperative point to make. And I think we lose the sort of, the people-centeredness of what we're trying to do here. And so, just wanted to sort of, again, think about and think about the sort of people that we're trying to sort of protect against these sorts of discriminatory tools.
Councilmember, can I make one quick clarification, putting on my professor hat? On page six, line 14, it's an "or" for who's included.
Yeah.
So, if you are any one of them, you are covered. Not if you are all of them, you are covered. That's an important distinction that I do not want to be lost.
The small business exemption is so narrow, it's to be unworkable.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'm out of time. Thank you all very much. And I hope that in the coming months, we can work together to remember the initial impetus for this mission to make sure that we, as a city, are not allowing discriminatory actions to happen, even if they are in effect and not by design, and also do so in a way that is not so overly broad as I think that this current draft is. So, we'll keep working with you all on that. Thank you, Chairman White.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilmember Pinto. Thank you very much to this panel. We will move to our next panel, Public Witnesses. Tom Folks, Sarah Gugan.